Hello and welcome to Falmouth Community Television. I'm Eileen Preston. Today is another day where the government channel sits down and talks with a government leader about the issues, the challenges, and the priorities that they see for the year ahead, and they give us a little update. And April is National County Government Month. Bet you didn't know that. And so we couldn't think of somebody better to speak to than the Chair of the Regional Commission for Barnstable County, Mark Forrest, is here with us today. Mark, thanks very much for joining us.
Eileen, thanks for having me. It's great to be here.
You've got a lot to talk about. We have so much in the county portfolio to discuss. We're only going to hit a few, I guess. But first of all, for people who don't know, can you give us a little bit of your bio?
My bio? I live in Yarmouth. I'm also a selectman in that town. My career path was starting in local government as a town administrator. That was what I wanted to be when I grew up, if you can believe it. And so I became a town administrator in Provincetown. And then soon after that, I had the opportunity to work for Congressman Gary Studs as his district director. And then I worked for Congressman Bill Delahunt as his chief of staff. So for about 26 years, I had the opportunity to work for two congressmen and worked principally on some of the major issues affecting the people here on Cape Cod and the islands. I learned a lot. And I also learned a lot about Falmouth in the Upper Cape. And many of the issues that I had to wrestle with involved groundwater, groundwater contamination, pollution, public health. But after I left Washington and came back to Cape Cod, I became very involved with the Cape Cod Conservation District. Conservation districts are all around the country, and their job is to prioritize funds for the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And within the Department of Agriculture, there is this program or a department called the Natural Resources Conservation Service, otherwise referred to as NRCS. And one of the things that I learned during my days with Congressman Delahunt is that the NRCS provides a lot of support and assistance to farmers, cranberry growers. And during Studs' tenure, they started providing help to shellfishermen or shellfish growers. And so during the '80s, we saw this huge growth in shellfish farming. Which means that when I came back to Cape Cod from my work with Congressman Delahunt, I joined the Board of the Cape Cod Conservation District, which is a partner with this NRCS. And the job of the district is to find ways to lobby and secure federal funds to serve the needs of farmers and landowners, particularly those that are having conservation challenges. You know, you might have a farm, for example, where some of the harvest or fertilizer runoff may impact a stream or a waterway. So the district works with the NRCS in helping that farmer figure out how to remediate and address that problem. So for landowners, farmers, cranberry growers, and shellfish growers, if they're wrestling with the problem where there might be an environmental impact, the district is there to provide not only technical assistance, but financial assistance. And lately, we've been involved in this very ambitious initiative called the Cape Cod Water Resources Protection Project. And this was approved by the Congress in 2005, when Congressman Delahunt was in office. And this is a multimillion-dollar regional initiative to restore coastal areas, particularly salt marshes, and to restore fisheries and shellfish habitat. And since I came back with the district, I've helped the district raise close to $100 million in funding to do projects.
So sorry, this is all saltwater?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all saltwater. It's all coastal. And we've raised a significant amount of money, and we have restoration projects going in in virtually every Cape Cod town. So I've been doing that while teaching government part-time at Cape Cod Community College.
That's right. You're a teacher as well.
Yeah. And I love teaching government there. It's a wonderful place. The college, it's where magic happens. And I became a selectman in Yarmouth in 2017. And when I was there, my principal interest was in getting a comprehensive wastewater initiative off the ground. When I was elected, it was dormant. It wasn't going anywhere. And so it was important that we breed some life into it. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be going to town meeting, asking the voters to approve Phase 1 of this very ambitious program. We'll be asking the voters in Yarmouth to set aside $207 million in bonding authorization to get this project off the ground. So water has been sort of at the forefront, protecting water, restoring water, dealing with water pollution issues and remediation. When I was with Congressman Studs, actually, my first day on the job with Congressman Studs, you'll get a kick out of this. Congressman Studs invited me to come to one of his town meetings in Falmouth. So he had a town meeting at the Morse Pond School, and I met Virginia Valieyla, and Manny Raposa, and Andy Dufresne, and all the selectmen and public officials at the time. And the Morse Pond School was packed. It was packed.
Well, they knew you were there.
Well, they knew Congressman Studs was there. So I came there with him, and all we heard about were groundwater pollution issues and a suspected plume contamination coming from--
What year was this?
This was 1985. So 1985 was my very first day on the job. My very first project was addressing groundwater contamination issues in the town of Falmouth. And with Congressman Studs, our principal goal was to get the military to take responsibility for the pollution problems that they were creating. And that's what I worked on. That was my very first issue and project.
So that's the PFAS?
Well, PFAS is actually, has become an issue like 30--
Later.
Roll the clock ahead 30 years and speed it up. We've seen PFAS become an issue. Back then, our detection technology was not good enough to really help us assess that there was a PFAS problem. There was a PFAS problem, but we weren't able to detect it. We could detect in 1985, obviously nitrogen, bacteria, chlorinated solvents--
Jet fuel, maybe?
Jet fuel, fuel constituents, and things like that. But what we've learned over the years is that just when you think you've got your arms around things, something else pops up--
Keeps it--
And you gotta almost reengage again. And that's been really the PFAS situation, that polluting, that problem out at the base in recent years, is that now that our detection technology is so good, we're finding hits of PFAS in a variety of areas, not just outside the base, but also in many of, virtually every community.
And have we found it all? No. We're still finding it right now.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
So that's a little bit of my background. So my work with Studs and Delahunt really had me grounded here on the issues facing the Cape. So when I ran for county commissioner in 2020, I really wanted to sort of continue to be involved in helping work on these issues and helping find solutions.
And so as a teacher, you've been a teacher, I hope you can help us with the funding. Can you explain to us how county government works funding-wise? Where you get your money? How are you allocated to the towns? What teams pick that money out? The chair probably doesn't do it, or the regional committee, the Assembly?
Right. Well, the way county government is structured is we have the executive of county government is the Board of County Commissioners. We have a legislative body--
Delegates.
Called the Assembly of Delegates. And there's a representative from each town. In Falmouth, the Assembly delegate is--
Robert Muscala, yeah?
No, it's Dan Gessen.
I was guessing.
Dan Gessen is the delegate from Falmouth. And born George Slade. And so each town has their own delegate. They're all incredibly talented, very, very smart people. And so we've got a very, very energetic, very smart group of county officials. And their job is to work with us on the budget. We will prepare a budget and then submit it to them, and they will review it. And then we'll work out, you know, whatever differences we might have or suggestions, and then we'll come up with a unified budget when our fiscal year begins on July 1. So on average, the Barnstable County budget is roughly around $28 to $30 million annually.
$28 to $30 million.
We have over 300 employees--
Over 300 now?
Over 300. And the revenue stream principally comes from individual assessments on the towns.
Oh, it does principally come from the towns?
Not principally, no. There are a number of sources. The biggest source is a deeds excise tax. So unlike municipalities, county government relies on fairly strict, narrow revenue sources. And they're somewhat dependent on the health of the economy. So if the real estate market is doing well, if housing is going well, then you know what? Our revenue streams will do well. But if there's a drop-off, and as we know, after 2008, 2009, we had a huge bust in the real estate market. Housing really slowed significantly, and so the county found itself with a revenue problem. And so therefore, it had to start making some cuts and some changes. So the county's been through some tough years. And I might want to point out that Barnstable County Government is one of the oldest governments in the country. We began in 1685. Can you believe that?
Wow.
We've been around since then and back--
So Barnstable, let's see now. 1636 was Boston? Wow. 1680, okay.
Yeah, 1685.
All right.
And it's sort of changed and morphed into a variety of different areas over the years, largely in response to the demands of local officials. But back in, obviously, the 17th century, county government was pretty much the core of most government activity.
Right.
And much of its work focused on building roads and setting up roads and helping create a sort of the initial transportation network. But today, it does all sorts of things. We have, you know, the Registry of Deeds. We have a Cooperative Extension Service, the Cape Cod Commission, which is our regional planning agency that provides a lot of support to the towns. We have--
Climate, Children's Cove.
Yes.
There's so much that you're involved with. It's amazing how many things the county does with really just 300 employees. You know, it's not--
Exactly. And in the area of water, obviously, we have, you know, a county lab and a county health and environmental department. And a lot of folks have recently learned about county government because of COVID and needing to access clinics and vaccines.
Public health, yeah.
Yeah. So our county health department was incredibly busy during that pandemic. And they were very active in helping operate clinics and getting vaccine to all of our communities.
Yeah, and efficient. Well done, really. Amazing job.
It's incredible. They did an outstanding job. And I think we've heard nothing but great things from communities around the Cape and their work, yeah.
So we're talking about how, I'm interested in ARPA funding. When does the ARPA funding come in? And when will it end? And how does that work?
Well, not too long ago, the county was informed that it would be receiving $41.2 million under this American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise referred to as ARPA. And the town of Falmouth and the other towns on the Cape, they got notices as well that they were going to get an allocation of this money. And the overall program was structured in a way so that even federal agencies were given a bump up in funding to do a whole range of initiatives. So for example, here on the Cape, we're very interested in funding for wastewater.
Yes.
So the ARPA program sent billions of dollars into the EPA programs that fund wastewater projects. So they got a huge increase in funding. That has worked its way back to Massachusetts. So you're seeing ARPA funding basically make its way to local communities in a variety of different ways. Now, in Barnstable County, what we decided to do in working with the Assembly is we decided to create an allocation for the towns.
Yes.
And so we set aside a chunk of that money for the towns, and we've sent aside a chunk of money for, you know, a small grants program. We have a chunk of money for eligible county projects, like, for example, expanding our labs so that we can do more PFAS work.
Okay.
And we can do other things to protect the environment.
Sorry, the lab you're talking about is the water quality lab?
Yes.
And that's on joint base, or where is that?
Well, we have a facility on the base that's called the Alternative Septic System Test Center.
Different lab, okay.
Different lab, different group of people. But they're all part of the same team. They're within the same department. It's just that they have a presence in a variety of areas. But the two basic areas are on the county campus in Barnstable and Barnstable Village. And the health department has a lab there situated on the, that we want to expand utilizing ARPA funds.
Great.
Because we're having the need to do more monitoring and more sampling. We have problems with our ponds, other freshwater bodies. We do sampling and monitoring at the beaches. And obviously, with PFAS, we want to be more of a resource for the individual towns in dealing with that problem. So we're going to be looking to expand the capabilities at the lab shortly, and in turn, being able to provide more help to the towns. Because much of what we do, in essence, is to provide help and services to the towns. We like to basically help towns in a whole variety of areas.
And particularly for something one town couldn't really afford to do, for instance, wastewater.
Right.
That's a big project that needs a big lift.
It is.
And you guys offer some specialized services, which are so essential.
Exactly. County government on Cape Cod is very unique. It's highly regarded. And we tend to focus on regional problems, the kind of problems that sort of transcend political boundaries. You know, water knows no political boundaries, you know, poverty, hunger, public health issues. Many of the major challenges that we face really transcend our political boundaries of the individual towns. And our job is to find ways we can work with our towns to help solve some of these challenges. So one of the more sort of popular programs that we have, and we have a number of them, but in addition to the sampling and the water monitoring stuff, is our dredging department. We actually have a very, very well-run dredging operation that is in and out of the various harbors on Cape Cod all the time. And what they're doing is they're helping, you know, sustain mooring basins or maintaining depths on some of our harbor channels so that--
I think your biggest harbor channel is in Chatham. The dredge is the busiest, I think, yeah.
Chatham has a very unique set of challenges in terms of dredging. So hardly a year goes by without a stop in either Stage Harbor or Aunt Lydia's Cove.
Yeah.
And Aunt Lydia's Cove is the home of the fishing fleet. And that's one of the reasons why our dredging department is so important. It's not only critical for public safety, but it also helps keep our fishing industry alive. And the Cape has a very, very important fishing maritime industry here. And so dredging is a critical component of it. And the other thing to keep in mind is that when we dredge, you know, you get sand, you get material.
Yes.
So we use that material to nourish our beaches. So we're in the beach creation business as well.
But you're supposed to test that sand, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Well, you want to make sure that the sand that you're putting on the beach is not only clean, but it's also compatible in terms of its grain size.
Yeah, it's not a, yeah, exactly.
It's not as easy as it might sound.
So when we talk about water, that seems like a good time to talk a little bit about wastewater treatment and how expensive it is, and that the Department of Environmental Protection just changed some rules, or they drafted regulations, right, that they thought?
Yes.
So can you explain that about the sewers and the Title--
We could be here for a long, long time talking about wastewater and the DEP regulations. Each municipality and the citizens from around the Cape in southeastern Massachusetts have been made aware that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is revising their regulations on Title V septic systems. Title V septic systems today, the way they're designed, the way they're constructed, is they don't reduce nutrients, or nitrogen, in the wastewater. And so what we're finding is we're finding a significant amount of nitrogen basically making its way into our estuaries and embayments and other water bodies and creating some real problems. You know, we've seen over the years a real loss in terms of shellfishing activities, scalping activity, fishing activity, our wetlands and waterway areas, our nurseries for all sorts of marine life. And they're not in decline, they're in serious trouble. And here on Cape Cod, yeah, that kind of impact on the environment has all sorts of ripple effects. It impacts the marine economy and fishing. It impacts marine life, a decline in water quality.
The environment, the economy, and health, all linked together in this one wastewater problem.
Exactly. And obviously, our beaches, I mean, people come to Cape Cod to fish in our lakes, fish off our shores, shellfish in our estuaries and embayments. So clean water clearly is critical from an economic point of view.
So the drafted regulations are pushing people to upgrade their septic systems. How is the county helping with that?
Well, we haven't yet seen the final regulations, so it's a little bit unclear what's going to happen. But I think it's safe to assume there will be a requirement for some kind of upgrades if you happen to live in what is called a nitrogen-sensitive area in your community, which for most of Cape Cod is sort of south of Route 20, or Route 6 south, or Route 28 south. For example, if you lived in Barnstable, Yarmouth, it's sort of Route 6 south in Falmouth, you've got a number of watersheds that have been delineated here.
14?
14. All of them would be considered nitrogen-sensitive areas. So a significant portion of Falmouth, people that live in those critical areas would have to upgrade their system.
So there's a septic loan fund, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Barnstable County has had for years what we call a septic system loan fund program that provided low-interest financing for homeowners that were, needed to put in a Title V system. And we've done probably over 4,000, 5,000 loans for septic systems. So it's been a very popular program. So we've rebranded the program and changed some of the financing. We've expanded the financing options.
Right.
And we've talked to the state about securing a stream of funding to help us because we anticipate that when these new regulations get finalized--
Big demand.
There's going to be a huge demand for help financially, and we want to be in a position to respond and help it. We can now call the program the Aqua Fund. And if you just Google the Aqua Fund in Barnstable County, it'll pop up on your computer screen, and we'll be able to lay out for you all the different financing sources or the kind of options that you might have to get your--
I think it goes down as 2% loan, which is pretty good, yeah.
Well, we have set it up now so that you can get a zero, you can qualify for a 0% loan.
Oh, lovely. Okay.
And my hope is that we'll be able to secure some grant funds where if you're very low-income, and we have a sizable number of people here who live on Cape Cod, just dependent on social security.
Yes, of course, sure.
And my hope is that we can find and secure additional resources to make it easier for the folks that are having the toughest time in all of this. Maybe there's some grant money where we can underwrite almost the full cost of the upgrade. Now, in some towns, there's a way to get out of that requirement. And the way a town can sort of get out of that requirement is if they apply for a comprehensive watershed permit, or a watershed permit for their community. And this permit would enable them to gain relief from the Title V system requirement. So in order to get the permit, you have to have a comprehensive wastewater system for your community.
Has any town done it?
Yes.
Okay.
Falmouth has done an incredible job. Falmouth has a comprehensive wastewater management program.
Okay. Do they have a watershed permit?
Mashpee does.
No, not yet. Has any town--
Well, that's a good, that's an excellent question. The towns that are in the Pleasant Bay watershed, so you've got Orleans, Brewster, Eastham, I think Harwich, they are in the Pleasant Bay watershed, and there's a group called the Pleasant Bay Alliance that's helped put together this watershed permit application and a game plan for dealing with the problems within the Pleasant Bay area. That's kind of the model.
Is it?
And that permit, when it was originally constructed, gave towns 40, you know, 40 years roughly, although there's an initial series of steps that need to be taken over 20 years. But it was sort of envisioned that it would take about 40 years to get the work done to clean up and restore the Pleasant Bay estuary. And so that's sort of being, that template, that model, is the model for the permitting process that will likely be adopted--
Likely be adopted.
--once these regulations get finalized. So Falmouth, in Falmouth's case, Falmouth's going to have to apply for like 14 watershed permits.
Estuaries, yeah.
Yeah, which, you know, for some folks--
It's quite a lift for Falmouth.
It is. And for me, I think it's a crazy idea. You know, Falmouth has got a plan, they've got a schedule. I think the more that can be done to help the towns just implement their plans--
Yeah.
Because Falmouth has shown considerable diligence and interest in implementing its plan. Our problem collectively on the Cape is that there's just not enough federal and state money coming here to help us do this. So our plans are principally structured on affordability. How do we do this in a way that makes sense and is affordable within the confines and the limitations of our community? So if we had to do all this work in a very compressed time period, like 20 years, that would have a significant impact on tax rates. That would have a significant impact on user fees and betterments. And one of the problems that we're seeing around the country is that as more and more communities are forced to shift these costs onto homeowners, it's becoming increasingly a huge burden, particularly in low-to-moderate income areas. So if we're trying to create affordable housing, if we're trying to help low-income folks or low-to-moderate income people, working families, make a go of it and survive and raise their kids, you know, thrusting these additional financial burdens on them can be just intolerable. So what we're trying, we have been advocating for at Barnstable County is for the state to give us more money.
How are you coming with that?
We're working on it.
Yeah.
We're not giving up.
Yeah, don't give up, yeah. So you have some maps in front of you, and so I'd like to pivot, if we can, to those maps--
Sure.
--and talk about the Joint Base gun range.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is, if I could, if you don't mind, is get up Slide A on the screen. And Slide A is a map that shows the Upper Cape, and the contours show, you'll see the Massachusetts Middle Littoral Reservation. But this is a map showing the contours of what we call the Sagamore Lens. The Sagamore Lens is like the Upper Cape's Quabon Reservoir.
I like that. That's great. Good way to think of it.
It's important to think of it because all of our drinking water comes from this body of water. I think if we knew at the time-- The base was built, you know, in the '30s and played a very important role in World War II in terms of training. But I think if we could do it all over again with the information that we have today, this would probably be the last place we would ever build a military base like this with the kind of impacts that it has. So anything that's dropped sort of, let's say you had a drum of fluids used for, you know, fire training. You know, if you wanted to dump chemicals in a particular fire training pit and then light them up, those residues and those residual chemicals would go into the ground. And when you look at the contours, they would flow in the direction of those contours. So water that, chemicals and pollutants that get into the ground don't stay there, they move. And so the Sagamore Lens literally gets filled up with rainwater, and then the rainwater pushes out and goes downhill. And so when you look at the contours on this map, you will see and understand why pollution on the base ends up finding its way in Falmouth. All right? So you just look at those contours and how the flow of water emanates from that installation. And you can see the impacts on Mashpee. Falmouth and Mashpee have been the two most significantly impacted areas. And for many people, it's been very difficult to understand why. Why are we? Well, it's because water flows from the base south, downhill, right?
Right, downhill, of course.
And what's happening is, as the groundwater flows downhill, it brings with it whatever pollutants have been disposed of, or whatever chemicals, whatever stuff has made its way into the ground up gradient or on the base. So the base has had a really significant impact, or at least the training and the disposal practices years ago have had a huge impact in terms of water issues here. So going back to 1985, when I was with Congressman Studs and we came to Falmouth, there was pollution emanating from the base wastewater treatment plant that was migrating south, and it knocked out the water supply wells in the Assumet Valley. And so what we've seen is pollution emanating from other sources on the base, coming out and knocking out other water supplies, other resources. And Mashpee, they've had similar impacts in losing water supplies. Now, rolling the clock ahead, because this piece of real estate is so important from a water point of view--
Yes.
Years ago, the Cape Cod Commission, an arm of county government--
Right.
--worked with the governor at the time, Governor Weld, and Governor Salucci, and then I think--
Jane Swift.
Jane Swift. She was in the governor's office. So during the tenure of those three governors, they worked very closely-- So during the tenure of those three governors, they worked very closely with Congressman Della Hunt.
Yes.
To do a master plan for, for the base, to figure out, okay, what can we do? What are the key environmental areas on the base that need to be protected and where should we concentrate military training? So that brings us to the, the next map.
Okay.
And you'll see on Map B or PowerPoint Slide B, you'll see literally the outlines of the military base and it's sort of divided into two sections. There's a squiggly line that goes through the middle of the military base property. And to the north is what we learned is probably the most critical water resource area on that property. So in this master plan study that was concluded in 1998, it was decided that we should create a conservation area. We should find a way to protect the water resources on this real estate and concentrate military activity and operations and training on the south. So that was the recommendation. And it's important to note that not only in the north is it critical from a water supply point of view, but the water resources that emanate from that area support a number of vernal pools, over 153. They're very significant ecological resources. The water that comes out supports and nourishes and provides the principal source of water for our ponds on the Upper Cape. This water also makes its way to the shoreline. So in some cases, in some communities near our shores, you see a lot of cranberry bogs. So between our shoreline and coastal resources like shellfish, you also have a lot of cranberry bogs. So now on the, on this area, on this land are also what we call pine barrens. And it's probably one of the largest pine barren areas left in the Northeast. In fact, the state Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program calls it one of the most ecologically significant areas in the Northeast. So out of this master planning process designed to protect water, we have now recommendations to protect water and wildlife in an ecologically significant habitat.
Right.
So it's important to sort of lay that out because if you want to build a machine gun range...
Enter a machine gun range, yeah.
So let's go to the next, the next Slide C.
Powerpoint C.
You'll see the outlines of a machine gun range. And this proposed machine gun range is an eight-lane range, each one 800 meters long. And most of the funding for the range has been secured. And the slide sort of lays out some of the other characteristics of the range. As you can see, it takes up a significant area. And on the next slide, I'm going to show you just exactly where this machine gun range is, Slide D. And if you look to the left, Slide on the left, you'll see not just the range and where it's located, but you'll also see the danger zone for the range.
Okay.
So this is the area where spray, bullet spray will go, all right? Danger zone.
Wow.
So I'm not sure how comfortable wildlife would feel being in a, in a danger zone, but one could argue that it's a significant adjustment in activities out there. Now, the range itself, as you can see, it's in the middle of the Sagamore Lens.
I was thinking, yeah, it's in the north.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And so this is the reason why it's become controversial, because within, within this northern area, which we now call the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve, when you look at that, we have a number of wells that are there already operating. And we're starting to find some other contaminants that may be potentially, we're not sure yet, but they could be impacting or potentially impacting our water supplies that we get from the, from this area. So now to the right, the final, the final snapshot I just want to touch on here is when you look at this, you'll see these little triangles.
Yes.
All circulating, they're either on the base or on the reserve. And the reserve is the shaded area to the north. And you'll see that when they pump and draw water, those certain, the lines that surround the triangles, each triangle is a water supply well or water supply source with multiple wells. And it draws water upland. And you can see all of these wells that are located outside the reservation property are actually drawing their water from the property. So the reserve and/or the military base. That's why there's such, that's why this is so controversial is because...
It's beyond the boundaries.
Well, it's exactly, the, the, this is such an important groundwater resource that there are many who believe we should protect it and take all the precautions that are necessary in terms of limiting use. Now, remember I used the term Quabon Reservoir? This is the water, the Sagamore Lens is our Quabon Reservoir? Well, if you tried to do this in the watershed of the Quabon Reservoir, they would basically throw you out of the room. All right? So you can, you have to ask the question, you know, why can't we manage the watershed and the water resources on Cape Cod like we do Greater Boston's water supply? So this kind of activity would not be allowed there. It would, can be completely out of line and incompatible. It's incompatible in terms of our watershed. So the county commissioners, along with a number of other groups and citizens, you know, have, have really stepped up to criticize and to call on the governor's office to stop this project.
What have you heard?
Well, we have a new governor.
Right.
So our hope, our hope is that we'll hear from them soon, but Governor Salucci thought it was a bad idea and he vetoed the project when it was brought up back in 1997.
Well, I don't know.
And Governor Swift was not a fan of the project. So they basically killed the project when it was conceived back in those days.
It keeps returning. Oh, thanks.
It's, it's, yeah, it's like the Freddy Krueger of, of projects. So in any event, it's back on the table again and the county commissioners are teaming up with other citizens groups to basically call on the governor's office to, to basically shoot this down.
And this is interesting and I'm wondering when we'll hear more about that. What should we follow to find out what's going to happen next? Are you waiting for a letter from the governor?
Well, the, the organization that has to make a decision on this is called the Environmental Management Commission.
Okay.
When the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve was created, there was an oversight body called the Environmental Management Commission. It's made up of the commissioners of three environmental departments, the commissioner of Fish and Wildlife, commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, and the other one, I think, is Conservation. So those, those three commissioners make up the entire Environmental Management Board and it's them that make a call as to whether or not it should happen. But we also think it's important that the governor take an interest in this as well because we've had Governor Weld had an interest in the conservation of our water out there. Governor Salucci had an interest in the conservation of our water out there. Governor Swift had an interest in the conservation of our water out there. Governor Patrick as well, Governor Romney. So our hope is that the, the tradition of conservation and protection of Cape Cod's water resources continues with this new administration. We're certainly hopeful for it, but there's no guarantee.
Past is prologue and Freddy gets killed again, right, in episode six?
We'll see.
Okay.
We'll see.
So there's also another water issue. It's getting over the water on the Cape.
Yeah.
Can we talk about the Bourne and Sagamore and how that bridge project is coming for the county?
Yeah. You know, this is something that, the, the new bridges that we need over the, over the Cape Cod Canal. Who would have thought we would have had such a complicated system? I mean, these, the federal government generally doesn't own bridges. The Army Corps of Engineers in this case, they own the bridges over there, but it's well beyond their capacity and their resources to build two new ones. And when you think of the '30s, when the bridges were built and the kind of truck traffic that went over the bridges, they were never even designed to handle the truck and vehicle traffic that we're handling today. So clearly they need to be replaced. And I honestly, I'm very optimistic. I, you know, I've talked to officials in the Healey administration. I've talked and talked, I've spoken directly to Congressman Keating and our senators. This is clearly a priority on everyone's agenda. Because the cost is so large, we just can't go to one bucket of money to get it funded. It's going to take funds from a couple of buckets.
Okay. What are, what are the couple of buckets?
The couple of buckets, there is a, we did a, an infrastructure, a bipartisan infrastructure program. And there's significant money in there for this kind of work.
Okay.
The other thing is these projects aren't accomplished in just one year. These are projects that will be accomplished over many years. And what we need to do right now is advance the design of the project so we can get it as shovel-ready as, as we can, as fast as we can. And then that will make it competitive for a couple of other buckets as well. So...
What's the price so far right now?
Well, we've heard $4 million, $4 billion for two bridges. But it really requires the cooperation of the delegation and the governor. I, I don't, I don't think the, the level of communication and collaboration was that strong in the waning days of the Baker administration. This new administration has really stepped up and taken a huge interest in this. The governor's already talked, talked with the president and other members of the administration.
And I guess he put it in the federal budget in some...
Exactly. If we sustain that kind of funding, you know, in several federal budgets, then we should be in reasonably good shape.
So when do you think, if you're just guessing hat now, when do you think it'll be done? How long does it take to build? What will it look like? Dobbo Bourne Rotary, right?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to get into the design features.
Not going to guess it.
Well, no, I'm not going to guess.
I can't guess you to guess it.
I'm not going to guess what the final design features all look like. There's a lot of conceptual design work that's been done. But I mean, it's going to take about five years to get the work done.
Five years.
And when do we start? Probably in 25, 2025.
Okay. So 2030, we'll have two done, completed bridges.
Well, I...
That's your guess?
That's, that's when we hope we could have them done.
All right, good. Well, that's something, that's something.
It is. And one of the, one of the reasons why I, I also enjoy being a county commissioner is that, you know, having worked in Washington DC for many years and on Capitol Hill, you know, I have the opportunity to touch base with my friends and colleagues that I used to work with in Washington to get updated periodically on how things are going. And so I know, we tend to be, on Cape Cod, we have a healthy dose of skepticism on, on all the big things, but I think this is one where we can, can rest assured that our congressional delegation, they're doing what they need, what they need to do and they know what they need to do. And the new governor, she's been terrific and they're working together. So I'm, I'm confident and optimistic that we'll get this done. It may not be on the exact schedule that we want right now, but I think we'll be pretty close to it.
Beautiful. So anything else you want to cover now that you're thinking that the county has as a priority, that you have as a priority, you're really working on right now that you'd like to...
Well, right now, this month, we've been focusing on water issues and water quality and what the county's doing to improve water quality. I think these are some of the things that are sort of where our priorities are right now, but I'm sure when we meet again, we'll have a lot more to talk about on some of the other projects that we're working on.
Love to have you back. We could talk about housing.
Yes.
We can talk about, more about the PFAS and how that's going, ARPA funding, there's a lot to talk about, right?
There's a lot going on.
Children's Cove.
We've got a very busy county. Yeah, Children's Cove is another, we could do a whole segment just on the great work that they're doing on Barnstable County.
Yeah, beautiful work on that, yeah. I want to thank you very much, Mark Forrest, for coming in and love to have you back. And I want to thank our viewers very much for watching and we will see you next time with another Government Chat. Thank you.